My computer says four o'clock, so we'll call it to order this second month of the meeting. Anyone have any objections to the agenda as presented? Not? I'm set to go. We're not with discussion regarding Brons statue placement on Main Street. I had mentioned this, this was a request from a group headed by Mayor Kerry O'Kane and I had mentioned to all of you about this. The suggestion was to refer to the downtown committee for their input. Their input was that they are looking at public art on Main Street and would rather have this as part of a full discussion. At some point in the future when they've got their vision in place. I talked to Mayor O'Kane about this and he was fine with that. They have a lot of money to raise, they have other places that they would, they are considering putting statues. So I just wanted to update that that's where we are. There's no rush on this unless someone really wants to go ahead and something put up right now. An update.
Bears are good.
Okay, bears have a couple of weeks to go. They will be out. Okay, if there are questions about that, budget clarification, special appropriations.
So, thank you. Mayor vote, Mayor of City Council, actually I'll just jump in here and grab this one for Brian. We've, in my correspondence with you, there's been several discussions or suggestions that as it relates to special, special appropriation process, that instead of doing that as part of our regular budget like we normally do, because we have a lot of requests and also because we have ARP funds and some of those funds are available to, to fund nonprofits is that we would suggest for this year, pulling the special appropriations requests out of the, our normal budget and schedule time in the month of July to have a special meeting to evaluate and create, actually I would suggest a, a special process where let the nonprofits know that we're accepting applications and put together a process and this is going, this discussion is going on at the county level with other than this, the other municipalities, everybody they got ARP money to discuss. There's a specific discussion, I know the county is going through a similar process, is that we would set up a special meeting in the month of July and take the applications we have now plus any additional, because I know that other nonprofits are already approaching you as council members as well as other local governments in Henderson County to, to see if that money is available for their use. So we would propose, staff would propose that we come up with a special process to have applications, that we would actually dedicate a special meeting to review these applications. I would even go as far as, as part of the, suggest that part of the criteria that this city council consider for evaluating these applications is to use your goals and objectives and your core values that you've established at the retreat as the criteria by which you judge how you fund these, like example, whether it be affordable housing is a priority of the city council. Diversity and inclusion is a priority of city council. Help dealing with homelessness is a priority, I mean, I, I don't have them all in front of me, but you have a list of things that you've established as priorities. And if we gave that guidance to the nonprofits to say here, you know, once the city council is sermons, how much money you're going to allocate to these uses, if any at all, we're assuming, but that you allocate, that as you make your application, you need to show how, if you get this money, how you're going to spend it to meet the goals and objectives of the city council that you've established. Um, I think that would be, I would suggest, city council may want to go a different route and that's perfectly fine. I just thought I would give you that suggestion. And the point of this item on the agenda is one to clarify that everybody's okay, that we pull the special appropriations out of the regular budget and that that will be, we would use a portion of ARP fund, these monies to, to fund special appropriations and this year, maybe even in this, in a couple, and then we had to spend the money by 2023, right? December 31st of 2023? Twenty-four, twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-four, by 2024. And we would have a money set aside to help with special appropriations. So those are my thoughts, just wanted feedback, am I, are we going in the right direction? Would you like to go in a different direction?
Um, I, well, first of all, I agree, I personally agree with having this special meeting for special appropriations, if that's the correct way to term that. And I'd like to suggest a date if we held a separate meeting just for that. So that's, that's where I am on this, I agree and would like to suggest a date, but maybe that's jumping, putting the cart before the horse, because everybody hasn't necessarily agreed to this yet.
I really like John's suggestion, especially of tying it to our goals and what we wanted to do that we decided back at the retreat, plus you could do it as a point system. So they meet this goal and that goal and that goal with this project. So then that's kind of how you, kind of like whenever we did the CDPG thing and they had the point system, because then it, it just makes it more clear, right? And it's easier to pick stuff.
I think with all this ARP money coming in, we'll have more than we usually do and it should be more thoughtful about how, how we're giving it away. Not a couple of thousand dollars here and a couple there, just because we really like those agencies.
I'll keep it mind short.
Same. I concur.
Okay, all right, I suggest a date. So I, I would, the week of, you have a meeting, Jen, the third Wednesday of every month, correct? The, the MPO, correct?
Well, that's the TAC.
TAC, sorry, my apologies, wrong one. So what would you guys think about the week of July 12th through the 17th, just sometime that week?
Seventeenth of Friday.
No, Saturday, sorry, 12th through the 16th.
I'm wide open, yeah, that week was due for me.
Oh, my goodness.
Jump on in now, John.
First try.
Well, you haven't picked a day yet.
I know, we have, but I'm, so I'm normally one of the planes, I'm available any day, anytime that week.
Just wanted to do the Wednesday.
I would agree, you're right, that's why I told you that I will come, ready to negotiate, but offer sometimes.
I would prefer not Thursday, but I could still work it out if that's best for everybody.
So Tuesday afternoon at four, I do have the downtown advisory meeting. What about just the Wednesday at four, that, that time?
Probably, that'll be July 14th. John, you're awful quiet, what have you got going on that week?
That, uh, we'll make it work.
Did you have a vacation planned?
I'll make it work.
No, did you?
Did?
Did you? Yes, he did. But, but can we figure something out? What about, so is the, that July?
But I'm one.
Just wondering, was it the whole week?
Yeah, that was, but that's just, I'm one and y'all are five.
Okay, well, the, the week before is also for me fun, it's just it's tied to July 4th and sometimes people have vacations tied with that, so.
I'm fine then too, but do you already have plans for the, that, our second July meeting? Or could this just take the place of that meeting?
I, I do not have plans for that meeting.
But is it proper to take that whole meeting? We still may need time.
My feeling is this, because of the sum of money, it needs its own, because let's, I think we're also going to be deciding at this meeting, are we not? Like, we're going to be deciding who gets what, it's not just for information.
Let's look the week before, Jared.
And let me say this, you know, I,
Don, you just don't get to talk right now. Well, the week before, once again, I'm all back, because if he was gonna, gonna be gone, I know he'll sacrifice it and I don't want you in it.
But, you know, we have very capable staff, y'all don't feel like, if y'all are okay with me not being here, I bet Brian and Angie could handle any questions you had, but if you, I mean.
That is fun without you, John.
All right.
Another option too, well, nevermind, nevermind, I was gonna say if you wanted to just get on the phone with us.
He doesn't want to do that on.
I'm, I'm agree, I mean, tell my John wanting to be here.
So what about the seventh?
Well, see, I'm good with that week.
Why don't we use Brian? Why, why don't we let Brian take the run on this thing? And if, I mean, I'm seriously, that's where I am, I'd like to stick with that week.
The 14th.
That works for you.
Yeah. The week before worked for me too, it was July 4th, that's why I didn't say anything. Those trust, yeah, attached to that.
Are you okay with that, John, does that stress you out?
No, no, I've got complete confidence.
So we don't even spend any of their money, we're spending, we're spending the federal government's money.
Well, what I know is he's gonna be tougher on you than I am, so.
And he knows, you're gonna have to turn around, look at him anyway.
Daddy's away, the kids can play.
And three lines and bubbles bounce off.
Oh, yeah, he's, yeah, he's gonna be doing all.
Really, no, if you do this, boom, numbers pop up, if you do this, boom, numbers pop up, that's what's.
I like it when he does that.
Say, let's go back to the date, what did we say, 14?
14.
14th to four o'clock.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, very good.
Good job, guys. All right, stormwater utility ordinance and policy. Is he online or is he?
He is in another room.
Yes, coming, all right.
All right.
Make some intro music.
I don't have a fancy presentation today, so. I know, hopefully this will be a nice short sweep, we'll get together. So this afternoon, I have three documents for you all. The first is the proposed stormwater utility ordinance. And that document basically outlines what the stormwater utility is, what it will be used for, more specifically than what's in our current stormwater ordinance. That ordinance is more specific towards things like what the post-construction stormwater regulations are and then also has some information in there, ordinances in there that pertain to the illicit discharge program for the city. So this one has, starts out with the findings, that basically discusses what is the stormwater utility, what it can be used for. The next section is definitions, this is where we define things like the equivalent residential unit, what impervious surfaces, what developed land is, what our residential uses and other property types are that we will be collecting stormwater service charges from. And then we move on to credits and exemptions. We've discussed the, the credit, that, different credit options and also potential exemptions from this utility fee. The following section is the purposes and definitions. And that outlines specifically what the stormwater utility fund rev, what the revenue generated from the stormwater utility will be used for, and there is some language in there that pertains to working off right-of-way, which I know is a program that we've discussed previously and the specific regulations or, or conditions that have to be met for an off-right-of-way program. It outlines two priority categories that a potential off-right-of-way project would fall into, there's priority A and priority B. And then it also outlines some limits on how much the city would put towards a project that is outside of city right-of-way. And so the limit for a single-family residential property is currently proposed at $25,000 and the limit for all other properties is proposed at $35,000. There's some language in there that talks about installment payments, so how that payment would be, yes, sir.
Good, will you finish your sentence?
Okay. And that is the first document.
All right, now I have a question.
Yes.
So if you don't mind, and I apologize, I probably should know the answer, why are we helping pay for something?
Why are we helping pay for something outside of the right-of-way?
Yes.
So there are a, a lot of situations where we have stormwater infrastructure that, so we have stormwater inlets on the streets, those inlets then discharge into a pipe that leaves city right-of-way and goes through private property.
Oh, I got you.
Like, like Ms. Thomas.
I got it, right.
Like Ms. Thomas.
This is to take care of that situation.
This is to set up a program where it's, right, great.
That, that is what, that's what that niche feels. Yeah, but that, that's, that's, that's the niche that we're talking about feeling right there.
Correct.
Yeah, I got it, I, I got it, I was thinking it was something else, I got you.
Right, so, so these, this would kind of put, put an outline together of how that program would be administered.
Or clarification too, if the city has documented have gone through there with the right-of-way and put it in, the city's responsible for it, right?
So if there's big documentation, like, I don't know what the definition or what that documentation has to, well, if there's documentation that says, hey, the city came through and installed this stormwater pipe on this year, here's the, you know, the design, here's the invoice for the work, then in that case, yes, we would be responsible for maintaining that infrastructure. But what a lot of the situations we run into is that there is no record of who put the infrastructure in. I mean, a lot of cases, I just looked at a case on Monday where, on Bunken Street, where, you know, there's a lot of stormwater runoff going through a culvert that runs through a property that, you know, there's no record of who put that culvert in there. And a lot of cases is what it is, is there was a stream or something running through the property, the person wanted to build the, on the property and the, you know, the quickest, easiest option was to put the, the stream into a culvert or a pipe across the property.
I just wanted to make a point of, you know.
Right, if, if it's something, now that, that's the thing, there's, you know, we don't have a lot of easements outside, stormwater easements outside of city right-of-way currently. And a part of the, you know, of this program would require that the person that wants to, you know, receive assistance from the city would give us an easement. There's also some language in there that says that even if they give us that easement, it does not hold the city liable or responsible in perpetuity for maintaining that infrastructure. So that is included in here, so we can go in and fix it, but we're not on the hook continuously to maintain it and fix it. And yes.
I think I, I figured out now what I, I meant to ask, which is with those funds and the, the criteria under section two or four, eighty, eighty-two, eighty-five, does a resident have to wait until there is a problem to request assistance from the city to maybe do a project on their property? Like, do we wait until we see a lot of flooding or can someone be proactive?
That's a good question, so currently the way that it's written, there's a priority A and priority B projects. So a priority A would be there has already been flooding of a, of a residential structure, there's been property damage, things like that. Priority B is that, let me see, I'll just read it directly from here.
Yeah, I see, I'm looking at priority B, I see it here.
Right, so, you know, crossplace flooding, flooding of attached garages or residential structures. And there's some other conditions that must be met in order for a project to be considered for that program.
Okay, but, but the money is for, could be for either one of those. If, if a resident was requesting the city to help pay eighty percent of the project up to $25,000 and it's not in the right-of-way.
The, the, the city's money for those projects?
Yes.
Right, so.
It could be for A or B, it doesn't matter.
Right, it's not earmarked, like, here's this amount for A and this amount for B.
Okay.
That's not how it would propose to be set up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just one point of clarification, this is only, but these funds of course will only be available to the extent that you budget for them. So right now, there's zero, it's just kind of setting it up in advance.
It has to be in the funds, right.
Correct.
Well, it has to be earmarked, I would say that you would set aside a certain amount of money to be available for these projects and when that money runs out, that's it. It, it would take another budget amendment to put more money in that.
Okay, so you all could, you know, either during the budget planning process or at some point during the year, make a budget amendment to put funds into that program.
Right.
At this point, we have not programmed any funds for that program.
Thank you for that clarification.
So are there any other questions regarding the utility ordinance?
So let me ask this, so.
Yes.
As, I think the key guidance there is, that's, this is what we talked about is the, what'd you call it, the property assistance fund or what are they, what, what did other utilities call it?
So there's, there's different names, but off-right-of-way assistance program, drainage assistance program, those are pretty.
So this.
Names, so this kind of outlines specifics for that, it also just outlines the specifics for the utility in general.
Okay, and it, and it has a specific amount, so that twenty, starting out at the twenty-five and, you know, eighty percent up to the twenty-five and thirty-five, just want to make sure, and, and, and obviously the council can change that. If we get into it and see there may be a need to have additional funding, if, looking at cost of construction and those kind of things, but I think what staff felt like is this was a, a good place to start, which will allow, we, what we do, hell, hopefully allow for more money to be available down the road to, to do with, you know, for more projects, right?
Right, right.
Just checking in, okay.
But we're only going to pay twenty-four percent of estimated project costs for non-residential.
That might be a typo.
It's a very odd number.
Yes, it, that is an odd number.
So that's, um, twenty-four dash two eight seven two.
Right, so I believe that should also be eighty percent.
Okay.
That is a typo.
That makes sense.
I apologize. I will make sure to amend that. Okay, so the second document we have is the credit policy and we've discussed this as well. Basically, the way that this policy is written is that if a non-residential parcel has a stormwater control measure that is functioning properly and maintained, then they will receive a fifty percent credit on their stormwater service charge per month. It outlines the guidelines for that program, it also says that the property owners must apply to receive that credit and that we, we did, as you'll see on the, the third document, the proposed service charge fee schedule, we did plug in a fifty dollar application fee to receive that credit, obviously if that's something that the council, you know, if you want it to be free application, we can make that change, but there, yes.
Can we do that, that, that fee would be credited if they qualified for the program? Can we do that?
Like, if they applied and they get it, fifty dollars.
Goes towards their.
Goes towards their.
But if they apply and they don't qualify, then they're on the hook for that fifty.
So I, I'm, I'm sure it could be set up that way, I mean, typically if they put it in the application, they would submit the fifty dollar fee with the application.
Right, and then if you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, you know, you know exactly what I'm saying.
And then if their application were granted.
Right.
Then that money goes towards what they would pay under either the cap or the credit.
Okay, so then, then the month that it's, the credits implemented, that fifty dollars would go towards the monthly fee.
Right, and if they don't get it, you keep the fifty.
Yes.
Right, I don't, you know, I don't see a.
You're gonna have to do, I think, a little bit of inspection or something.
Well, that's what the fifty dollar fee has been proposed, because we'll have to do an inspection, we'll have to review the, you know, the stormwater calculations and things like that to make sure.
Their applications accepted the fifty dollars as a credit towards whatever it is, cap or credit they've earned.
Well, they would, it would be towards the credit, because they can't receive, that's another part of this document is that you cannot receive.
I'm sorry, I meant to credit, excuse me, yeah, right.
I just don't like paying as a business owner a fee to then turn around and pay you more money, yeah.
That makes sense, yeah.
If that's what we can do, that'd be great.
I'm, I'm paying a fee to actually get less money, less money.
Right, you're paying a fee to get a credit.
It's just, right, but we're still paying you more money. Like, we, we pay a fee for you to tell us to pay you more money.
No, 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 he's, he's gonna like, have you pay less money.
Because either way, you're paying. It's still, but you're still paying money.
Right.
You're paying money to then pay you more money.
But I think people are asking you to come out and give them special service, that's why I could see the fifty dollar fee, because you have to inspect it.
Well, I mean, it, we'll inspect it regardless, that's, but, and yes, in order to receive the, the fee, they, we would inspect it and then they would have to, you know, if they don't pass the inspection, they'd have to, you know, do what they needed to do to bring the, the facility into compliance and bring it up to the, you know, basically how it was designed to function. That could be things like overgrown vegetation or like a blocked outlet structure, different things that can happen. But, yes, so to get the credit, we would do the inspection and review the documentation and then obviously there would be some staff time involved with the finance department, making sure that they're receiving their credit and the billing portion of that.
I like Jen's idea.
I like your idea as well, Jen.
Yeah. Okay, so that, we will credit the fifty dollar application fee to the next month's stormwater fee, stormwater service charge if the application is approved.
Yes.
Great, all right. Let's see. Guidelines. And I believe that, you know, covers the gist of that document. And then the final document is the proposed service charge fee schedule. So the way that we have proposed to set it up is that residential detached, residential units, so detached single-family homes or duplexes would pay a, or manufactured home or mobile home located on an individual lot, not in a manufactured home park would pay five dollars per month. Other residential uses, so there's things like triplexes, townhomes, condominiums, apartments would pay one ERU per dwelling unit. And then all other properties would be considered non-residential and they would pay one ERU per three thousand square foot of impervious surface on the parcel.
Clarify per dwelling unit when you're talking about like the apartments and the condos and all that? Is that like five dollars for the building of eight apartments for each apartment?
Five dollars per apartment. And we did some research on this, on specifically on that piece of it and there's, it's a pretty variable across the board as far as utilities are concerned. Some people do that exact method, other people do different things, so. I, in understanding how we're currently charging, I feel like that would be the easiest implementation, because all of those customers are currently paying five dollars per month for stormwater. Then the only change under this proposed fee schedule would be for your non-residential properties.
Does anywhere in, like, all of this talk about, we had talked about reevaluating our fees and assessments at some point, right, we were going to start out with the cap and then how long did we say, two or three years?
Or was it two or three?
Two.
Two years.
And then is there something in this ordinance that says that it will be reevaluated then? Or do we need to have that in there?
You don't typically, you wouldn't, you just direct staff, bring it back in two years so we can put it on your calendar to bring it back, yeah.
There's not like a set schedule for reevaluation.
And there's no like binding thing if somebody had this ordinance or policy and they thought that that's what they were. I'm saying like if they were, if they said, well, no, we had a two hundred and fifty dollars cap.
I believe it's in specific reference to the cap, it says as long as city council, if there is a cap in place.
So each year you will have to revisit at budget time your fee schedule anyway, every year. And so just because you have the cap this year, doesn't mean city council is locked in to give you the cap forever. That will be looked at every year as part of the budget.
It's in section twenty-four dash two five five, it says credits may be adopted, amended or eliminated at the discretion of city council as part of the adoption or amendment of the fee schedule. It's in section twenty-four dash two five five. It says credits may be adopted, amended, or eliminated at the discretion of the city council as part of the adoption or amendment of the fee schedule. Excuse me? Oh, you were asking.
If there were any other question. It's not really a time for public comment.
Larry, we have met with the chamber. We changed this several times to try to work with what their request. I think we made some real, it's all a bit new for us. And we're just gonna have to give it a go and see how it goes. And we'll answer the questions as and pop up as we can. Remember, state and federal made us do this. We didn't just decide we were gonna do it. We have to do this and this is our start. And we will do the best we can to make it.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Madam Mayor, council members. I appreciate it. And yes, that was a thumbs up. Okay. I thought it was a hand up. All right. Thank you, everybody. And Angie, if I'm correct, this will be for, available for public comment in the next council meeting.
So you have to have a public hearing
Yes.
On it. And so we would set that, the idea was to try and make it correspond with the new fiscal year. And so the idea was to have the public hearing at the same time as your budget public hearing, which is currently scheduled for the first meeting in June. So then it would go into effect July one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If we're doing, don't we also adopt the budget at that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're gonna approve this and then immediately slide it right into the budget.
You can do it at the same time. You can make it part of the same public hearing. The notice just has to clearly state that the public hearing is on the budget and on the stormwater fees.
Okay, got it.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon. It's good seeing you.
All right. Draft technology plan. You have a fancy presentation.
Yeah, luckily he didn't have a presentation today. That would've been bad.
Now he really wasn't all that fun and stuff.
So tonight I'm here to talk with you all about our IT strategic plan. And John, if you go to the next slide, I'll try to be quick. I think we'll get out here well before six. But there's kind of four areas I want to cover. I want to talk about why this is important, why I'm even here talking to you about this. I'll talk about the scope of work that we underwent during this plan and then update council on the results and then hopefully get some feedback. Anything that's been on your mind about IT or what you hear today, we'd love to get feedback because it's in draft form right now. It's an important piece. And we'll bring it back to you for adoption in June, hopefully. So why this is important, this is where I'm probably gonna get messed up the most. This is probably the least prepared I've been for a presentation, but let's go for it, Don. So next slide. It's a really weird looking image. So there's a speaker on TEDx, Simon Sinek, and he kind of talks a lot about the golden circle and inspiring change in starting with your why statement. You know, most people think from what do I do? How do I do it? But they never really get to why. That's kind of a abstract part of the brain of what you believe in, the purpose for why you get up in the morning and why anyone should care about why you're getting up and what you're doing. So we kind of wanted to start here. We got here as a technology committee and as a technology team, and we wanted to move forward with kind of our why statement about how we're gonna move forward the next three years. I missed anything on this? No, I think we're good. So John, next slide, please. So we started with talking about like, what is IT and why is it even important? And we kind of landed at IT is everything. It's, it's all around us. It's in our everyday lives and it's affecting all of our services. Next slide. Doing further research on IT, this is a Harvard article and one of the big results, talking about IT in government was poor IT leadership is a significant drag on governmental performance. John, next slide. Deloitte International Consulting Firm focuses on governmental trends each year and kind of what's coming up and what you need to be preparing for. And if you look at this list, every single thing on here is extremely tech and IT driven, talking about the digital citizen, the rise of data and AI ethics and smart governments and innovation accelerators. Next slide. And so we hired Fountain Works, which I greatly, greatly appreciate them to work with us. Y'all have seen these before. Y'all have done them before. So we went on a six week or six session over five month crash course into Fountain Works world where we were dropping sticky notes on the big pads and doing all that. And we were talking about the history of Hendersonville's IT and this really spoke to me. You know, coming from a one-person in-house IT system to a more mature services approach where we started modernizing our IT. And we got to this point at the end where we're talking about where we're going. And if you can go to the next slide, John. The kind of big takeaway, which really hit me was, you know, the whole group, and this is a group representative, I think sixteen staff within the city, laying on improvement of IT benefits the citizens as well as the city. And that, that spoke to me because it got me back to thinking about the Simon Sinek thing in the culture we hear having, having this city was, you know, we're talking about technology. It's not that exciting. It's not that flashy. It's not the fire truck. It's not the police officer. But they're talking about how IT affects the citizens and how it enables the rest of the city to affect citizens. So John, if you go to the next slide. So I started thinking, okay, so what if I took the city and it applied Simon Sinek's methodology to it? So, so our why is, you know, we believe that we're a vibrant mountain city. We believe in a high quality of life. How we do that is through our service excellence team. Again, that started when John got here back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And we exceed customer expectations. We deliver services with excellence and we act as one team. And we just happen to deliver government services. I think it's a great approach. I mean, it's, it's inspiring. It sets us apart as an organization. So now if you go back one again, just thinking of this, I was like, man, we're, we're already here. We're ready to take the next step as an IT committee and start thinking about a bigger vision for what the city can do with technology. Then one more, John. So understanding the scope of what we embarked on. So John, if you go to the next slide. We had six meetings. Like I said, we started in October of twenty twenty with a kickoff meeting. And we talked about kind of our milestones, our organizational needs, where we've come from, we did a current assessment of how we're doing, what's happening every day. And then by the time we got in December and January, we started talking about our values and our vision of what we wanted to see going forward. Finally, getting to kind of our strategic and operational initiatives and kind of like how we're gonna do it. So what we drew from this was a why and how we're gonna do IT for the city. Next slide. So the team, I gotta give credit. Unfortunately, they wouldn't, they didn't want to be here tonight. I wanted to force them to come, but it would just be too many people in the room. But we got Captain Tracy Cox from Police, Angela Reese over there, a great city clerk, Jamie Carpenter from the Downtown Department, Garrett DeMoss from a wastewater treatment plant, Brent Detwiler with Engineering, Jay Heatherly with Water and Sewer, but really kind of the go-to IT support here at the city. Lou Holly was Holloway, joined the tech committee. He wasn't here for all of it, but he, he has been part of it as well with community development. Jesse Ivins is our new senior accountant upstairs in Finance, Camille Ledford with Public Works, Ricky Levi out of the water treatment plant, Allison and myself, Travis over in GIS and Engineering, Jeremy Poss in Water and Sewer, and then Ashley State in Finance and Justin Ward from the Fire Department. So we had a really good representative group and this group has been together, I think, since two thousand sixteen. And they've been really the champions of how we do business and IT here in the city. We have managed services. But you know, what you'll see as we talk more about this, we kind of have a little bit of a gap between who's championing it here in-house combined with our support out of house and just everyone who's picked up IT along the way. I mean, it's a lot of kind of individual champions and individual departments who are handling IT for us. And I can't forget VC three was on there as well. Pat Spompanato is on the line today. He's our VCIO. He's been integral in moving us forward in our IT plans. So really what, what came out of this is an IT strategic plan. I've got a draft before you today for you, you can review. You don't have to, if you don't want to. I hope, hopefully I'll cover it pretty well today. But the vision that we came out of this was that we leverage smart, strong, secure, integrative and innovative technology to make informed and transparent decisions, increase citizen engagement, empower its staff, and improve ease and reliability of service delivery. So the results. So these are our principles. This is kind of, this is our why. So we believe in mobile access and multiple options for citizens and residents and visitors. We believe that ease of use for staff and citizens is critical. You can't just offer one way of doing things after multiple ways of doing it. We believe that staff should have the tools and train to do their job well. We believe that we need to have secure and resilient systems. And I'm gonna talk a little deeper dive on that later. We believe in forward-looking and always reevaluating what's going on around us because as we all know, the IT world's just always changing and nothing really seems to be staying the same. We also believe that using technology to deliver service and understand its needs is important. We also believe that transparency is critical. I'll talk a little bit more about that as well later. And we believe in respecting and supporting each other, the citizens, community, and our vendors. Some things we talked about, and this is a little relatable to the Deloitte trends, is we talked about our own trends. So we talked about the community and what's going on around us. And then we also talked about the organization and what's going on internally. Some of the things we talked about was the dependable technology access. We, we know we've been thrust into this with COVID and holding meetings and changing the way we do business. We've talked about building trust with residents and how important that is for us, moving forward into the future. We've talked about new residents in our community who might have different expectations of what their government should be doing for them. We talked about the Internet of Things or IOT. So that's, you know, if you're Alexa at home could let you pay your water bill, what, what's that gonna look like? And we should be, you know, planning for and thinking about that. And then also how it affects emergency response and how we would respond in an emergency from a technology standpoint. Some of the internal trends include recruitment and retention, cost of living challenges, mobile work, reliable hardware and software, which is often a huge challenge, multiple solutions for pretty much everything. You can go out there and there's twenty vendors for a single type of like, you know, survey solution. And then data transparency is another big one for us. So the kind of how we're gonna do it, and I'm, I'll go hop into the next one, but we have four focus areas and priorities for each. John, if you go to the next slide. The first one being building a safe and resilient IT system. So some of the priorities we established were strengthening awareness and training about technology. Training is critical. And what we'll see later is, you know, the human in us and in our organization and outside our organization is the biggest risk we have to some sort of data breach or cybersecurity challenge moving forward. We've established a priority of establishing and testing a disaster recovery and business continuity plan. So if we were breached, if we were ransomware or something like that happened, how do we continue business? Talking about advanced endpoint detection tools, which I'll explain a little bit later. Investing in network equipment because that's kind of the backbone that's propping this all up. And then establishing clear electronic usage policies for employees. That's gonna help with internal controls and passwords, dual factor authentication, things like that. So just a little background into some of the cybersecurity. This is from our VC three consultant. They do a great job for us on this front. We'd really be out of the water without them here from a cybersecurity standpoint. And there's a lot that goes on that we really don't know about. So I want to talk a little bit about cybersecurity. So here's just some, some fun facts on it. In twenty twenty, the average time to ID a breach was two hundred and seven days. So that, that's a really scary statistic to me. What that shows you is that there are, there could be someone in the organization that no one knows about. And on average, it's two hundred and seven days. Sometimes it's much longer. Sometimes it's much shorter. But two hundred and seven days is the average time to ID that you've even been breached. On average, there's two thousand two hundred and forty-four cyber attacks per day. Average cost of a breach is around four million dollars. Ninety-four percent of malware is delivered by email. So that's all those fun. This is bulk, the mayor of Hendersonville. Please buy me a gift card now.
Marbury, you have been contacting me a lot lately.
They have been. And I'll explain why they're doing those too. That's right. Sixteen percent of the breaches are involving the public sector. So we are one of the large targets, along with some other sectors. The cybersecurity skills cap is really large. I mean, a lot of people really don't know what to do if something were to happen or what to do to start preventing something like this. And remote work is a huge target. Luckily, VC three, when we went remote, was able to set up virtual private networks for everybody who went home. So rather than just plugging in their Wi-Fi or their internet, they were actually on a secure network coming back to the city network rather than something that's just opened anybody to come, you know, hop on from outside their house in a van. So also the US government saw one point two billion records breached in two thousand eighteen. And in twenty twenty-one, they allocated eighteen point eight billion dollars for cybersecurity spending. So I'm, I'm gonna take you through how some of this phishing works. So, you know, it starts with that silly email that no one really thinks is a problem. And most of y'all catch and send my way and say, hey, it's happening again. Please make this stop. And but those ones are typically just like the initial phishing attempt. It's to see if you are gonna respond. If you respond to something like that, that's when they start the more elaborate type social engineering of, you know, trying to get into your system. And, you know, social engineering has been around for centuries, right? Trojan horse showing up, bull of people to come inside, tricks them out to get inside and then cause a lot of damage. But now it's in an email. And typically, you know, we have things in place in our emails that are scrubbing the emails in a sandbox before they come to us, trying to detect anything negative that could be bad for us to click. And people just, you know, the hackers continue to get smarter. They know what's happening. So they say, okay, I'll not make the thing you click bad, but I'll make the thing click open. And then something in that is bad. So there's just an elaborate number of layers that are continuing to happen. Typically now what you're seeing is you'll end up getting something that looks like a Microsoft product or looks like an official office document. And when you click that enable content button, you just let someone into the system and you typically won't have any idea because they're there for two hundred and something days before it's even identified on average.
Anybody can do that, including us.
Yes. Yeah, it's, no one is immune to any of this. So in, in the thing about this, I'm gonna go through the stages of ransomware attacks is, is that it's human operated now. It's not just like a virus is showing up and it's on your computer and it's operating as that virus. There's now human actors behind a lot of this. So typically what happens is when you click that enable content is something called TrickBot is deployed through the phishing attempt. And so that goes into your system and starts just harvesting as much data as it can. It sits there quietly. It's gaining whatever passwords, whatever usernames it can, whatever data it can, whatever backups it stands, understanding where things are deployed in your file software. And once it finishes what it does, it has all this information it's been collecting for hundreds of days. It opens up that, the way it got in, back to a human operated hacker on the other side. So then this person typically goes through the information. And if that, that bot was able to identify admin rights, you're pretty much done right then. Cause then they can go in and begin the encryption process. And once the encryption process is done, you're pretty much in a pretty bad place because typically those aren't very safe. And also even if you pay and get your data back, it may have gotten corrupted in the encryption process. So that's how a ransomware attack works. I want to talk a little bit about a couple of other recent attacks that we've seen. So John, next slide. So find out how serious it can get. So, you know, typically what we've seen recently is the ransomware. Someone gets in. They say, we've got your data. We've got locked up. We want four hundred thousand dollars. We want two million dollars, whatever. They pay it and then they get their data back. It's gotten, you know, there, it's, there's some more recent examples of how bad it can get. December twenty twenty, the solar Um, December twenty twenty, the SolarWinds data breach. So that was a nation state supported hack of the US federal government and included eighteen thousand other entities. And they had about eight to nine months before the federal government. And it wasn't the federal government. It was a a company that used discover that there was a breach. So that's, that's a lot of public information and public data that's now being used for political purposes, not necessarily just dollars that are dollars in ransom. The other one, this one's probably scared me the most is the February twenty twenty-one Oldsmar, Florida water supply attack. So this one, uh, the water treatment plant had a user who frequently had a remote desktop, kind of free remote desktop application. Any of us could download it. He had it on his system and he'd have some, I think probably they were remoting in from home to operate their SCADA system. And a hacker accessed the remote desktop, was in their environment and started increasing the Y levels in their water output. Now luckily, the water treatment plant operator was at the desk, saw what was happening, it kind of called and got shut down immediately. But if that were to be successful, I mean, that's poisoning thousands and thousands of people uh with their water supply. So uh, again, just very serious, not a great uh world to be in. And then March twenty twenty-one.
Can I assume that same thing could happen to our water system?
Though we will, we do our best to keep people out. We don't have.
But I mean, as far as remote controlling some chemical that goes in the water.
Yeah, someone could do that if they were savvy enough.
With the SCADA system, they don't allow remote modifications only viewing. So that's one step we do to prevent that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben. And then lastly, so the Microsoft Exchange one was a zero day vulnerability, meaning they've like never seen this before. Essentially, any Microsoft product that hadn't had the latest patch for Exchange was then open to the dark web and they were just being sold, people's access to people's data is being sold all over the place. Um, and once they had that attack, so the patch being the critical piece of this um for this most recent one, that was March. And I saw Tuesday, I think um DC police actually has ransomware because of Tuesday. So um, it's becoming much more common and it's very important that this focus area is a very high priority focus area of the city. So some of the things we've talked about for preventive measures for this, we do a lot of these, but I want to highlight three of them. The biggest being employee awareness training. You know, we got to know that our employees know not to click these links, not to go buy the mayor gift card and respond to them that they've done. So it's, it's, it's the square one. Ninety-four percent of these attacks happen through human error and social engineering. Um, so a couple of things we can do for this is there's a a training program where, you know, you send out the fake uh email to folks and then you get a report back on who clicked it. Did they watch the video to learn why they shouldn't have clicked it? So on and so forth. Additionally, there's a lot of password uh dual factor authentication. I know who does that, but most of your bank should offer that. And I highly recommend it. It requires a second level of access to your data um and to your password. The biggest one here, advanced endpoint, well, second biggest, I'd say behind training, advanced endpoint protection. Um, so this is something, you know, typically, you know, think of IT, you're thinking about building firewalls and and things to keep people from getting it, right? So thi- this type of tool is something that monitors your internal environment. And it's kind of creepy how good it is, but it makes essentially a profile of your user. It understands what you do. And the minute it sees something weird, if it sees an access point from, you know, some IP address in Kazakhstan, it shuts you down. It keeps the rep, keeps you off of the rest of the network, doesn't allow to access anywhere else inside. So it's more, it's an internal monitoring service rather than like an external preventative service. Uh, that's advanced endpoint protection. That's, that's the key to all of these most recent attacks and to ransomware. It's having something watching the inside, watching for things that don't seem right and isolating it so it can't get elsewhere. And then lastly is just incident response, knowing what we do if something happens. Uh, we're not really there yet. I think we have some idea, but that's something we really need to improve on. And then lastly, the three Ps, passwords, patching and people, those are the big ones, changing your password, having dual factor authentication, making sure you're patching your systems, which VC three does a great job for us regularly, and then training your people. So the second focus area is a coordinated approach to IT strategies. Um, this is really focusing on uh the different personnel uh within the organization that can help us kind of understand where we need to go. So uh, things we've talked about are IT directors, a power user or kind of applications, uh czar administrator and a database administrator. We've got so much data now that um we've got multiple people monitoring it and most people managing it, but we don't have anyone who really knows all the aspects and tying it all together. And then lastly, uh, just continuing utilizing our role with VC three. They're extremely knowledgeable organization and they help us a lot along the way. So John, give the next slide. So really, and again, I talked about this earlier, the missing piece for us right now is kind of that internal team of IT professionals. We have access to great IT professionals with VC three. And we have a great internal team that's kind of well versed in IT, but we don't really have that standard champion. So that's something we're going to be moving towards in the next three to five years as well.
Hold on, you said three to five years.
Yes.
Sounds like we need some of this stuff now.
Well, there's, yeah, just the full priority scope, right? So as much as I would love as like the IT person to say, yeah, I have to have an IT director now. I'm also the budget person. So I have to look at it's kind of a curse. Um, so I I we talked about it. Um, if it's something council wants us to talk more about, we'd be happy to, but uh, for now, what we have in the budget, which you'll see next week, uh, does not include an IT director. I'm really going to shit myself in the foot.
I do think it's worth talking about though more because especially with these types of issues. I think I actually talked to you guys both about it when I first got elected about having like a designated IT department. And I feel like the problem is if you wait until you really need it, then it's like too late.
Yeah.
Because if you start building the system now that, you know, you, the the whole program can grow into, then you're better equipped so that when you actually need, have the necessity, then you're already rolling and set up.
Yeah, I think it's something we could definitely talk about at the budget workshop and dedicate some time to.
I have a question. We used to have an IT director when I first started. And they got rid of that person or that position for VC three. But we're talking about keeping VC three and bringing that position back, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the direction from this plan and this.
Right. Yeah.
Because they're just such a.
Hear everything you've got.
Yeah. And there's, there's such like a a wealth of knowledge that we get from VC three. I mean, for what we pay, we're getting, you know, just some of the people named on it. These are all like really high quality, six figure type IT professionals. And they provide us service and advice and consulting. And it's the reason we know so much today that we didn't know before.
They're very responsive, right?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, it's, I just want to keep hearing where you're going.
Cool. The third area is just uh developing a culture of ownership and innovation and collaboration. So it's talking about like working together and people taking ownership of IT, understanding what we're doing as a city in IT and sharing with one another. So um, John, if you want to go to the next slide on this one. Just for example, like talking about IT fairs, you know, what what's your department doing with software? So I can know that might benefit my department. Uh, if the fire department's installing preemption devices on all the uh streetlights in town, you know, could that benefit the police and EMS as well? Is there cost sharing opportunities? So this is really just kind of our statement of ownership and like collaborating and innovating IT. Then lastly, this is probably the most fun one is providing the easy, transparent and effective options for community access and engagement. So it's time of public wifi, not just necessarily on Main Street, but in parks and other areas of the city. Better broadband access, accessible tools and channels. What we saw through COVID is, you know, you have to always provide access for meetings um and access to talk to your city council and your staff. Uh, expanding online options for service delivery requests. Um, a lot of the big word is, you know, governments creating some sort of government app that you can do everything from. You know, you can request a public comment. You can request additional patrols in your neighborhood. You can pay your water bill. Increasing transparency by making us more open online. And then continue to improve our virtual meeting access for public meetings. We know that's, that's a big one. And just some examples of this, one, one I wanted to kind of brag on is the top left weird little diagram. Um. So with this city council approved a partnership to build out our fiber network uh the past three years, and we finally completed the build out. And essentially we've ringed out our city facilities. And what that's done is we've built a better technology environment for the city, but it also creates a better fiber broadband access for the community. Because when we built this, this connection between our facilities, it allowed, you know, typically there's ninety-six or so strands of fiber and you only, you're only using like four of them. So they're able to then lease out to other private providers who can pull to homes, pull to businesses. And it just makes the the community a better place for broadband, the fact that the city is taking a lead in that area. And I think I had all the rest. So um, that's it. It's a hopefully a short and sweet plan. Uh, the big kind of scary popular stuff is all the cybersecurity information. But we're here to get feedback of anything y'all want to see. Um, or if you want to hear more about, or we need to kind of rework, uh, we'd like to hear that today or over the next month, uh, feel free to get with me. So at that point, I'll take questions and feedback.
Well, I mean, I'll I'll say it. It does seem like waiting around on this is I I know you're the budget person and the number cruncher, but uh, it does seem like this is almost a form of protection now. You know, like the security guard at the front desk or whatever, like we're we're, we have millions of millions of dollars in our accounts. And I I can see where we owe fiduciary duty to our residents to protect it from hackers that maybe realistically could do it or find out, you know, people's personal information, which could be really bad. So um, well, if your goal was to scare me, you did it.
Yeah.
That wasn't my goal.
I'm now terrified to use any computer or open any.
Yeah. So I I just want, I don't know, once again, how we're to crush that to start the process, but it does seem to me that waiting a whole nother year to do something that has to be done probably not prudent.
Sure. And we do kind of our steps going forward right now and create four work groups. So we're splitting the tech team up into four areas for each area. And they're kind of developing the annual work plan to kind of keep this going. Don't let it just be something that we put on the shelf. Um, so we've got different kind of leaders of each group and then we come back quarterly to meet to try to advance this forward. So.
Thing I'm also concerned with is we have some big goals that we're looking at for our fighters, uh, law enforcement. Just pay in general, that is going to be substantial. We've got to make it legitimate if we're going to keep people. And that's why I really want to hear how you start making this stronger with an optimal integration of it at some point, maybe two to three years out. But in the meantime, we're very well protected with the things we have in place. I think if you go out and you just hire somebody right now, the rest of the pieces might not be ready to come together as well. But I'm probably the most backward IT person in this group. So uh.
Brian, you know how many local governments in North Carolina were hacked through ransomware last year?
There were a lot. I mean, I know Shelby Durham, Orange County, Person. Pat, do you have any idea on that?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have an actual number, but the ones you just mentioned plus Mecklenburg County, um, there were.
Mecklenburgs was like their social services.
Yeah.
Department.
And and Mecklenburg actually was uh infected by a person checking their Gmail, their personal Gmail account on their break. So it's these kinds of things that Brian's talking about actually have to be very encompassing.
Yeah, and they're not, I mean, for us, we do have private health information, you know, in systems through like for employees too, but I mean, like the HIPAA information that gets released is super scary to me also.
About the endpoint thing. So how how do we get some more endpoint protection?
Yeah, so Pat, we're we're working on that right now. There's kind of a there's some layers to this of how we move forward with it. And there are certain things that Pat and, you know, myself and the tech community have been talking about. Advanced endpoint protection, we're working on scoping out and getting it deployed as soon as possible. The other kind of big ones is we've been evaluating to dual factor authentication for everybody. And we know there's going to be some like operational pain points and challenges with that. So we've been a little slow into that. And then also initiating the know before kind of training uh software system. So we know who who are vulnerable people are.
And I, and I think the, I'll say this, the the key point about the IT directors, as Brian said, is 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 in, you know, ultimately any IT, internal IT staff is is the person or people that can be that um that champion can be the person that um can be that liaison between our staff, between you and VC three, because we do have a lot of this, we're in very good shape. I mean, there's nobody that is a hundred percent protected from, I mean, you know, insurance companies are not even insurance for cyber attacks anymore because it's such a loss, right? So, but we are in very good shape. Um, and so uh I think the IT director i- is very much about champion, about helping us be more innovative, how helping us to evaluate software, to evaluate um options, you know, where where are we having duplicate software programs, right? Is, you know, as Brian mentioned, is uh the water and sewer have a uh software package that of one type and then uh community development has another brand and they do the same thing and they work together. So really the IT director is really getting us thinking um and coordinating the effort within our um their organization. So it's really kind of a two or three prong approach, which I think is what they put together in the IT plan. Is we've, we've taken a lot of the first steps. There's always improvement as it relates to security. So I I know this all scares you, but we're, we're in much, much better shape than we were six, six years ago. I mean, much better shape. Um, and that in our ability to work with VC three to pivot during COVID was, this was a classic example of how, what good shape we're in because we did that. I mean, we sent customer service folks home. And knock on wood, I mean, there was a few blips, but we did pretty well. I mean, we, we were able to keep the calls handled um and keep people signing up for water and sewer and those kind of things. Thanks. So a lot of that stuff is in place, but it is Brian said, the next step is that IT director person that can be the champion, can be at our management team um and work with VC three to really know the internal workings of what each department does and how they do it. It can, can help us fine tune our IT needs um because um this is just important. Um, but it Jared, to your point, I don't, or or Jen or anybody, I don't think it's, it is a significant need, but it's not mission critical, I think tomorrow. I guess my point is I think we need to have a plan in place. I I would love to have it tomorrow. But um, there, we have to keep budget things in consideration. There's a lot of things that we want to do. I would love to say, let's take the next year and look around um and develop a job description, look at the pay, do all that and look at this as being a a budget item for twenty-two, twenty-three. Because I don't know if we wanted to hire one July one that we would be able, one, we don't have a place to put them um right now. And two, they're in such demand. Um, it'd be hard for us to compete right away. So I, and and again, I I agree, it's not going to get better. But my suggestion is we take a year and get everything in place that we need. Look around. If we find someone that just falls out of the sky, then hey, we're ready to do it. But I think that one year we'd be much, much better prepared than we are if we try to rush and do it um this, this July. So that's, that would be my suggestion.
Well, a year sounds a lot better than the three to five that we were hearing earlier. So.
That was a budget man talking.
It's the full build out. That's all three.
I have a question, just not really that way. What about?
I have a question. It's not really that way. What about on my phone, I have my personal email. I have my company's email. I have the city's email, have Honor Flight Networks email. So I have a lot of things on there. And I open, I try not to get stupid on these things, but in the event I open one of, one of these others, can it then find its way home to the city?
If you're on our network, it probably can. But if you're out somewhere else, it's not going to go from one email into another email.
You say on the network.
So if you're here in city hall and you're on wifi.
Yeah.
That would be a risk. Anything you do on our network, if you connect in and you're saying, hey, I'm here. I'm, I'm Jeff Miller. I'm on the internal wifi. That's when you're at risk.
I mean, is my phone right now on?
Did you click something?
No. I don't think I have ever used it on the city's network.
No, your, your laptop would be, but I'm not.
Laptop would be. And, but I intentionally didn't put anything else on my city laptop, period.
What, what you would want to be concerned with, think of that as an aggregation point that you're talking to all those different systems. If you were to be compromised, any of those systems that you then talk to could potentially be compromised. Typically that's not going to happen as easily with a telephone. But if you were dragging a laptop or a PC around, you, you're more likely to be able to spread that infection if you happen to pick it up from one of those other systems.
Yeah, John, I had to bring mine over, my personal one over from other ones, saving them work. And just wondered how the, that's the only time it's ever been done, but wondered if we have addressed that. I know you, when you sent people home to work for COVID, I'm sure they had pretty strict, because you said you had their own network or whatever that they were working with them.
Yeah. Yeah, they were across virtual.
But do we need to do anything differently with our?
Were they on VPN?
Yeah, they were on VPN. Yeah. So Jeff, I think to answer the question and Pat, you might go answer it better, but I think it's just about being smart because it, there's all sorts of ways that someone could come in and cause a problem with our network. Again, one of the big things that we're working through as soon as we can is developing that endpoint section. So if something does happen, we're able to isolate it and doesn't, it doesn't sit there and dwell, right? That's where you're at risk is people, something gets in, someone's not being smart with something that gets into your system and then it sits there and it's not detected. That, that's the two biggest points of risk. Now, Pat, is that correct?
It, it is. And what I would add to that is the traditional antivirus is looking for bad behavior. You know, applications that are doing bad things. But the, the bad guys have figured out ways to make your normal everyday applications that look like they're doing good things, but they're being used in a harmful way. And that's what advanced endpoint protection focuses on is aberrant behavior from normal everyday applications. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you're good, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's good feedback.
Yes, we think we are going in the right direction.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Well, thanks to all the employees who have been on that committee and working on this. Only good and get more complicated as we go along. They would have anything else they want to mention? If not, you're a journey. All right.